Our story began in 1991. Over time, the mortgage industry has experienced many changes, but our core values here at CIS have always remained the same: character, integrity, and service. You don't need to be a mortgage expert to get a great financial plan. You just need to work with one. Our focus and dedication have allowed us to help thousands of families reach their dream of homeownership. Whether it be refinancing your current home, buying a manufactured home, or purchasing investment property, we have a product for you. We invite you to find out more by visiting our website at CISHomeLoans.com or like us on Facebook. CIS Home Loans: Mortgage loans made simple. Equal housing lender.
We'd like to welcome everybody. This is an important night for everyone with our new administration. Just everybody be patient and let's hope we can get through it. Can you hear me okay? Everything's good, okay. Is Mr. Jeremy Sorrells, is he here? Okay, Mr. Sorrells, if you will, I'm gonna let you do the invocation. If everybody will please stand.
Father, tonight we come and we know that this is an interesting time in the life of our city. Lord, we have a changing of those who are to oversee not only the business, but the welfare of the people of this city. And God, I'm reminded so much of Joshua, Lord, of, "God, how one guard passed and the other came on." And God, you said, "Be of courage, be strong," and to continue on them. So, Lord, I pray that as this transition takes place even tonight, that, Lord, each of these councilmen and our mayor will be of strong courage. And, God, they will be full of faith and they'll be focused on you in all that they do. And, Lord, many times, they've got to get their feet wet before they cross that river that they're going into, Lord. And, God, just as your people had to cross the Jordan. Lord, let them keep their eyes on you, keep their focus on you. And, Lord, you will vindicate them before the people. And, Lord, you will raise them up, you will use them. And, Lord, I pray for wisdom that will overshadow them and just cover them as they transition into these roles. Lord, we love this city, and, Lord, we love you. So bless this time tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
If you will, remain standing. We're gonna have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated, please. Judgment, if you will. I'm gonna let you come forward. This is John Bentley. He is going to perform our oath of office for our mayor and council. Once you have completed that, I will ask you to take your place on the stage. And we'll hand this over to you.
I don't need that.
You don't need it?
Yeah, I got a big mouth.
We're gonna swear the mayor in first. Mayor Page.
Let me, before he, well, come on up. But let me just say, I so appreciate those that are willing to serve the city in the capacity of either councilman or certainly the mayor. This is a town that I love. I've had opportunity to live pretty much all around the world, but this is where I wanted my home. And I love this city. And I so appreciate those of you that have taken on the thankless job of serving the citizens of Hamilton, Alabama. And it's a tough job. I've sat back and watched for over 20 years how the difficult problems that face our city council. And this is, this is America at its best. You know, we see certainly that we live in a great republic, but it starts right here. It starts with a mayor and with our council members. And we're so blessed to have those that are willing to run for office and to serve the people of Hamilton, Alabama. But I just want to say personally, thank y'all. All right, mayor. I state your name.
Robert Page.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the duties of the office upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the, say that one more time.
Okay. Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You're now our mayor. Congratulations. I understand that the council members want to be sworn in individually. So I guess we'll start with our mayor pro tem. Is there a certain secret, or what do y'all want to go by? Or is that? Well, you're the mayor pro tem, so. He kicks the bucket, it's all in your hands. Okay, raise your right hand.
I'm left handed.
Okay. I state your name.
I Wade Williams.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you. Appreciate you.
I can well remember when Wade was on the council moons, many moons ago, how that council had a tremendous task of saving our hospital. And a lot of folks don't realize, we came that close to losing our hospital. But because of the diligent efforts of Wade and others that were on that council and Mayor Sims, our hospital is what it is today. And we're very fortunate to have a hospital, first of all. But anyhow, that's a plug for Wade. Okay, who's next?
Let's go with Ross Reed, please.
Now, this is neat. Nineteen, nineteen years old?
Yes, sir.
Gracious. You're in for a treat. You wait till those calls come in at 1 o'clock in the morning with a garbage hat picked up. Raise your right hand, please. I state your full name.
I, William Ross Reed.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Scott Robertson.
Scott. Okay, Scott, if you would, raise your right hand. I state your full name.
I, Michael Scott Robertson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office upon which I am about to enter.
Upon the office that I, of which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. You gotta, you gotta tote that up with you.
Let's go with Matt Sims, please.
This is ET's Bible.
That's ET's Bible. I'll be gracious. If you would, raise your right hand. Put your left hand on the Bible. I state your full name.
I, Matthew Allen Sims.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office upon which I am about to enter.
Upon the office of which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Where'd Matt run off to? Take the big stick with you. Walk softly and carry a big stick.
There you go.
Last but not least, Scott Tyra, please.
Don't we all wish that L E was here to witness this? I know he'd be awfully proud of you. Right, raise your right hand. I state your full name.
I, Scott Edward Tyra.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the duties of the office.
And discharge the duties of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Right, congratulations. Okay, what do we?
All right. Got that.
Got the motions and?
We have to officially appoint Wade as the mayor pro tem. So we need to approve Resolution 2020-11-2-1. And that's appointing Wade Williams as mayor pro tem. You'll need a motion in a second.
Motion on that matter? Got the motion?
Second.
Not a motion, a second, all in favor.
I abstain. I can move for myself. Thank you very much. It's an honor. Thank you.
And now we'll need to approve Resolution 2020-11-2-2 that would reappoint Angela Owen as our city clerk and maintain her current rate of pay. We got a motion.
A second.
We got a second. All in favor of that motion. Thank you. At this time, we'll announce the reappointment of Ronnie Vickery as our police chief of the city of Hamilton for our police department. And he will maintain his current rate of pay. Do you accept that position, Ronnie?
Yes, sir, I'd say.
We'll have your swearing in a just a moment. At this time, we'd like to announce the reappointment of Tim Rise, our chief of the city fire department. And he will maintain his current rate of pay. And we'd like to have those officials to come forward and be sworn in at this time.
We're gonna do this en masse?
We're gonna do this as a group. If that's okay, unless y'all want to do it separately.
Pick one of you, grab your Bible, have the first table, throw your Bible.
All right, we got everybody here. Okay. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your full name.
I, Andrew Ryan.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Our next item would be a recommendation to approve Resolution 2020-11-2-3 that would reappoint Judge Wyatt Howell as our municipal judge for the city of Hamilton over the municipal courts. And his pay will be $1,200 per month to perform this service. We'd need a motion to select Judge Howell as our municipal judge. Got a motion, second? Got a motion and a second? All in favor? Thank you.
We need to swear, man. We need to swear.
Yes, Judge Howell, please come forward.
I used to come here in the summers, particularly the summer of 1964. I well remember Bondo Howell, as he was known at the time. What a privilege it is to swear UNY. Raise your right hand. I. State your full name.
Robert Wyatt Howell.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the State of Alabama, and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon the office upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Next item, item seven, we need to adopt the Resolution 2020-11-2-4 that would reappoint Jeremy Streetman as our city's prosecuting municipal court attorney. He will remain, remain under his current rate of pay at $500 per month. We'd need a motion to appoint Jeremy.
Make that motion.
Got a motion, need a second? Got a second? Scott, all in favor? Thank you. Okay. Our next adoption of resolution would be Resolution 2020-11-2-5 that would reappoint Scott Hunt as the city's attorney for the city of Hamilton. He will maintain his current retainer fee of $500 per month. We'd need a motion to retain Scott Hunt as our attorney. Got a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. All right.
What? Sorry.
Would, is Jeremy Streetman with us tonight? We'll have to swear him at a later time. Scott, will? Won't require a swearing? Okay. All right. Those will be our men that are already been sworn in, okay? All right. And the next motion would be motion nine, item nine. And that is a recommendation that all the city employees will remain under their current positions and maintain their current rate of pay. We need a motion to retain our employees.
Make a motion.
Motion by Scott and a second by Scott. Okay, all in favor? Retaining our employees, thank you. And we've got some great employees on that end. Item 10 is a recommendation to adopt a Resolution 2020-11-2-6 that we continue to use all the current financial institution depositories. Angela, would you name those depositories, please?
Oh, we use People's Trust, First National, First State. I think that's, I think that's it.
Three, okay.
Yes.
We would continue doing business for those. We'll need a motion for that.
Make that motion.
Got a motion by Ross?
Second.
Second. Mr. Sims, all in favor? Okay. I'm gonna abstain from that since I sit on one of those boards. So just count me as abstaining from that vote. Okay. Item 11, will be a recommendation to approve Resolution 2020-11-2-7 that would reappoint Allen Cantrell and his firm of accountants as our city's accounting firm. We'd need a motion for that. Got a motion and a second? Matt and Scott, all of us in favor? Now, Alan, we appreciate the good work you do for the city. Help us so much, so many times we call on you. The item 12 would be a resolution that we would need to adopt. And that is Resolution 2020-11-2-8 that would reappoint Riggs Accounting Firm as our auditors for the city of Hamilton. And we don't need a motion for that. Got a motion by Wade and a second by Ross. All of us in favor retaining Riggs Firm as our auditors. They as well do a great job. I'm not sure if they're present or not, but they're, they're doing a great job for us. Let's see. Item 13 is a recommendation to adopt Resolution 2020-11-2-9 that would reappoint, appoint your mayor to serve on the Northwest Alabama Gas Board. We need a motion for that.
Make that motion.
Got a motion, need a second? Got a second? All of us in favor? I'll not vote for my seat. Thank you. That ends our organizational portion of the meeting. I want to stop right there and just make a few announcements. And then we have some business. This is your government right here, folks. I want to give them a solid applause. Thank y'all for being interested in us in the city. To get on board, it's, it's not a thank you job, believe me. You'll hear lots of complaints out in the community and you'll say, hmm, what did I do with this one? It'll be, it'll be okay. It'll be okay. We'll work it out. We don't get everything perfect, but we do the best we can. And as long as you're doing the best we can, I think that's acceptable. We're gonna do our best to do our best every time. And I've got this place from this group already. We've, we've been able to chat just a bit and know very much on board to be your city government and to be progressive in your city government. I'm so proud of every one of them. And as I said, I've enjoyed serving with the past council. Many times I'd look around me and I wasn't the oldest man in the room. This group, it's not hard to figure out. I'm playing a new role. I'm the old man. Okay. With that said, I've got just a few announcements following this meeting tonight. There'll be a reception. There's been a good deal of food prepared. I don't want any of it to be hauled away. So make sure that you participate in the reception. Stay for it because we want you to have a treat and enjoy the evening as much as you can. With this COVID thing going on, we'll not get too social here. But everything's prepackaged. You won't be handling anybody else's food. So whatever's in the package, it's prepackaged. It's for you, for your safety. There's plenty of drinks that we'll not be pouring drinks tonight. You'll drink directly from the container. We'll fish those out for you with a rubber glove and hand them to you. So you won't have to be reaching in the house with your bare hands. So we're gonna try to be careful here tonight. We've still got COVID with us. I had a call from Mr. Les Walters this afternoon. He said, "I tested positive today." And, you know, it's still around, folks. So as much as we can, we need to be careful. And I'm gonna announce that the city will begin its new garbage route pickup the week of November the 9th. Almost every household will have a new pickup date. So you need to observe the maps. Yours color-coded map that's, that was in your water bill. This latest water bill will tell you what day your pickup will be on. If you can read the little map that's coded, it'll show you if you're in that color code. And then it will identify when your date is. And so there's a few little rules we need to follow on the pickup because you're gonna have to put your can, don't put it under electric wire, utilities wire, because the arms gotta pick it up and dump it over in the truck. So make sure you place your can in an open space where they can pick it up, set it back down. Everybody's got a qualifying can now. So you need to use that. And be sure that you use flip cans because this arm is gonna reach out there and get that thing and dump it. And if you don't have a can that's made for this thing, it might tear your can up. I'm not sure. But let's be careful about using other cans. City Hall will be closed November the 11th. That's the week we start this pickup. So we'll probably do a double pickup the following day. But we'll be honoring the Veterans Day. And we need to all be in remembrance of the people who gave it all for our nation and our freedom. Tuesday, November 3rd is our general election, where our presidential election, our senate races. Some amendments that are on the ballot are important. So make sure that you get out and vote and vote for the candidate of your choice. But make sure you go and vote. You have a voice in government by casting your vote. That's the simple way to have a voice. So everybody get out and vote. All right. Those were the announcements that I had for tonight. Now, in way of business, it's time to get out into business, guys. So we're gonna have a little short meeting here and then we're gonna enjoy some refreshments. Tonight, we're gonna be asking you to approve the minutes of the October 19th, 2020 city council meeting. And we'll need, that was in your mailbox. I think y'all have all read it. So we'll need a motion to approve our previous minutes.
I make a motion.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor of approving that? All in favor of approving those minutes? Thank you. Also, tonight, we need to make a motion to recommend to approve our accounts payable for the month of September, and those are, those bills are now due and payable, so we need a motion and a second to pay our current bills.
Make a motion.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor of paying our current bills? Thank you. The next item is a recommendation to declare 1996 Ford F-250 pickup, a 2000 Toyota Tacoma pickup, and a 2004 Grasshopper mower as surplus equipment no longer usable by the city of Hamilton Recreation Department. These items will be sold on Gov. deals to the highest bidder. Funds from the sale of these vehicles will be deposited into the city's general fund, and we'll need a motion to declare those items as surplus property and be auctioned.
Make that motion.
Got a motion from Ross? Matt made a second? We'll need to vote to declare those as surplus. Thank you. That's all the business that we have in this meeting. If no one else has business to discuss tonight, we'd ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make it.
We got a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Got a second? All those in favor? We thank you all for coming. Please don't leave without enjoying some of the refreshments. I'm going to ask Kathy and maybe Amy to kind of help her there get started with the, before y'all dismiss, let them get in place to help you and show you what's back there, and, and everybody enjoy something before you leave the building. Thank y'all for coming. I do appreciate these guys for accepting their role as our city leaders. Thank you very much. You are the gentlemen.